The Senate Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Board of Authority Board meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. The time is 6:00 P.M. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Pastor Fred Wood, Riverbank Hall in this church. Also, I live here, so I'll be voting, and sorry, none of you are in my district. And I also teach here at Adelante High School. Let's bow our heads for a short word of prayer. Father God, we come to you tonight. We're asking, Lord, for your continued guidance for this council. We're thankful for this council, how they've been a council of peace and a council that would work together. And you see, Lord, that we have elections coming up, and two of these honorable council members are having a run against each other. And we're praying, God, that your perfect will be done in that part of the election, also in the rest of the election. And you see, God, that America has been bombarded with flyers and calls and advertisements. And help us, God, to know how to vote. Help us to vote like heaven would have us vote. And I know sometimes, God, you'd probably say, "None of the above." But we're praying, God, for your wisdom in the election ahead for each one of us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz. Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fossey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There are no changes to the agenda. Any council or authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to move forward. The first order of business is the proclamation bells of peace. City of Riverbank proclamation bells of peace. A World War I Centennial Armistice Remembrance. Whereas a tolling of bells is a traditional expression of honor and remembrance. And whereas a century ago, 4.7 million American sons and daughters put on the uniform to serve our nation and the world in this global conflict. And whereas men and women from our own fair city of Riverbank served selfishly and honorably in World War I. And whereas 375,000 American casualties, including 116,516 deaths. Whereas on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month in 1918, an armistice to the fighting was declared. And whereas the United States World War I Centennial Commission has called upon all Americans across the nation to honor and remember those who served. Now therefore it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank in the State of California does hereby call upon the citizens and institutions of our community to toll the bells in remembrance of armistice at 11:00 A.M. local time on November 11th, 2018. Signed today by me. That's an important event in global history, and I hope we can observe it during the Sunday, November 11th. Item 1.2, State of Education. Stanislaw County Office of Education.
We were hiding it from you, Doctor.
Okay, I'll get myself situated, and we'll be fine. Well, so my name's Tom Shanion, and I'm coming to you from the County Office of Education. And I've been going around to city councils and the Board of Supervisors kind of just giving an update of what's been happening with the regards to the state of education. And what I've left you with is the latest initiative that the county office and our partners, business partners and school districts have been doing these last few years called Destination Graduation. But before we get into that, I want to share a few things with you to let you know where we've been. So just a little historical perspective. Back in 1980, you can see the number of students that we had in the state of California. And currently, we have over 6 million students that were educated in California. So over 2 million additional students have come into the state. And yet, when you think about, well, we've built a lot of new schools, and we've done a lot of expansion. We really haven't when you consider the number of students. So in many places around the state of California, there are really crowded conditions and facilities that are really in need of modernization. But that's for another discussion. But I just want you to know the number of students that we are now working with. And these next two pie charts really kind of give the picture of our reality that we're working with. So this was taken from statistics from the Department of Education. And this is 1980, and you can see where the students were in terms of the ethnic breakdown. And then now let's fast forward, and this is where we are today. So it's almost been a flip between the Hispanic population and the white population as far as students in the state of California. So what I wanted to point out is the fact that what makes this a bit more challenging is that that pie chart section that are Hispanic, of that 54%, there's a large percentage, well over 80% of those students are identified as what they call EL students, which means English learners, where they go home from school and speak another language at the house. And so the challenge is to get young people, especially in the elementary, primary grades, reading at grade level by third grade while at the same time helping them to assimilate and acquire the English language. It's really, that is a challenge. And so that's why we have struggled when you hear, "Well, what's wrong? Why can't we close this achievement gap?" And I'll share some more about that as we get into this. In the state of California, we have over 10,000 schools. You see there the breakdown with Stanislaw County and the terms of our makeup of high schools and middle and elementary schools. And this is really all driven on the fact that you've, many of you have heard me talk before. Jim Clifton wrote a book, and it's called The Coming Jobs War. And everything in education boils down to a job. How are we preparing young people for success in life? Because success in life usually involves having a job and being a productive, contributing citizen in our communities. And so Jim Clifton, when he wrote this book, it's been out now for a few years. But he's the CEO of the Gallup Poll. Everybody's heard of the Gallup Poll. And for six years in a row, he did a world poll. And the world, the question was, "What is the most pressing thing to you? In your life, what's the most pressing thing that you have?" So when I read that part of the book, I thought, "Okay, well, terrorism. I'm concerned about terrorism. I'm concerned about our economy. I'm concerned about health care. I'm concerned about immigrants. I'm concerned about a lot of things, as I'm sure all of you are." Number one, six years in a row, the number one concern worldwide are jobs. Will I have a job, but more importantly, will my children have jobs in the future? And so we need to make sure that our young people are equipped and ready to take on the challenge of the future, to have jobs. Can we create jobs? Can we bring jobs back to America? That's, that's, it's a competitive world. I share the story. I was in Los Angeles not too long ago. We had meetings there. And in the lobby of the hotel the night before, there were at least 400 Japanese students that were there. They were dressed to the nines. They spoke perfect English. And I kind of joked with them, and I said, "Well, you're here, you're going to Disneyland, you're on vacation." And they kind of looked at me and said, "No. In Japan, we go to school 232 days. In America, California, the most we attend is 180." So that's 50 days a year, and multiply that over the course of 12 years. Look at the number of instructional days that they're getting that we're not. But you know what they were here for? They're here looking at career opportunities in America. These are young people that want our jobs. They want to take our children's jobs. We, I mean, sure, come on over. But that's why we need to make sure that our young people are prepared and have a sense of urgency and a sense of purpose. I tell people when I go around to high schools and I talk in career classes, "What do you like to do? What is your passion? And pursue that." There are jobs, we have jobs now in America. It's a matter of making sure that you get yourself prepared and ready for that workforce. Because this is it, the coming jobs war. Okay, so moving on. This is kind of the world we live in. I don't like to joke about it too much, but the point is technology is our world right now, and we revolve around that. But, you know, we have to find a balance. That's the key thing. Because, you know, just when you have, you know, textbooks and everything's going digital, you also have an increase in texting, bullying, cyberbullying, and all of those things that are the negative side effects of that. So we just need to work with a balance with young people, have parents be responsible. I really applaud parents that have their students or their children turn their phones in, leave them on the kitchen table at night before they go to bed. Because, you know, enough, you know, put that down. You know, the average teenager looks at their phone 270 times a day. They look at their phone 270 times a day. They just pull it out and see, "Okay, what's going on?" And, you know, Facebook, well, of course, teenagers don't look at that hardly anymore. Instagram, Snapchat, all that. But they get so consumed with, "Oh, everybody else has a perfect life but me," you know? And that's all, it's fake, you know? A lot of these people just make things up. And there's a lot more depression that we're seeing with young people in school. A lot of things that we have to find a balance with technology. Okay, well, let's move forward. So this is what we have to do. We have to make sure that our young people through the system are lifted up so that they feel confident when they go out into the workforce and that we have prepared them so that they can be job-ready, whether it's college or career, whatever. So when, I've been 12 years at the county office. I've been privileged and blessed to have probably the greatest job ever. But the point is, we've done four county-wide initiatives in that time. And the first one we did was this one called Everyday Counts. And I just want to let you know, two of the highlights of that is the second bullet. Every district in the county participated. And the third bullet, look at the money that was generated. Because we just helped raise the awareness. Get your children to school. It does matter. It does matter. Get to school. That extra revenue generated $3 million in the couple of years that we did this Everyday Counts. The next initiative was the Fit for the Future. And we did this because we have a way to identify through our physical fitness tests what the childhood obesity rates are in our county. They were horrible. They were horrible. Kaiser Permanente met with me and said, "We have almost an epidemic of childhood obesity in our county." And these are the numbers to prove it. Third grade, fifth grade, seventh grade physical fitness tests. You know, we don't even require PE anymore in many schools. I mean, it's like, so we've just become too sedentary. And we just sit. We got to move. And so we teamed with then-Governor Schwarzenegger, and we joined his fitness challenge. And I'm happy to tell you that two years in a row, we, because once again, all the school districts got involved, businesses got involved, and we were twice, two years in a row, the number one county in the state of California. And the governor's secretary would call me and say, "The governor wants to see you in Los Angeles Wednesday." And I'd say, "Well, what's going on?" "Well, because he wants you to tell people what you're doing in Stanislaw County. Your secret to success." "Well, how about that? We're known for something great." And that was awesome. In addition, the schools that participated, they were given three $100,000 gyms that became part of their PE program at those schools. So great results from Fit for the Future. And then, of course, we had, remember, in the 2000s, we had the recession, the Great Recession. And I would come to city council meetings and board meetings, and there were just cuts. We had to make cuts. Board members, city council members had to make difficult decisions. People were saying, "Cut the library, but save the sports programs." And it just was uncivil. And so we did the initiative called Choose Civility. And I'm happy to say, the third bullet down, we had over 200 business partnerships that signed up for that. And on Friday Casual Dress Day, it would be nice to, I'd go downtown, and I'd see people wearing T-shirts on Casual Dress Day that said, "Just be nice," or "Be kind," or "Respect." And the business owners would buy it for their employees. But most importantly is that, next bullet, seven other county offices took all of our material, and we trained them up, and they emulated what we were doing here in Stanislaw County in their own system. So the civility thing rippled out. A few people had said, "Tom, we need to bring that back now," you know? But the point is, we've had great success with these initiatives that we have had in the past. And the one that you have the booklet on is what we've done in the past few years called Destination Graduation. Why? Well, we looked at the numbers. When we started this, you can see at the top, our high school graduation rate was 78%. You're thinking, "78%? What's happening?" That means in our county, every year, 900 students started ninth grade, and four years later, those 900 didn't walk across the state to get a diploma. That's unacceptable. Because what's happening? That's 900 last year, 900 the year before. Those, how are they going to contribute to our economy and to our society? And so we started this Destination Graduation, and we did a number of different activities to just help bring the awareness and help these young people to make sure that they got that diploma, to understand the importance of that. We brought in speakers. This gentleman, he and I went to high school together. I called him up, and I said, "Steve, come back. Come over to Modesto, do a talk for us to talk about entrepreneurship and what it means to be outside-the-box thinker." And he said, "I'll do it, and I won't even charge you. I usually charge $90,000 per appearance. I'll just comp you guys." Well, this is Steve Wozniak, who founded Apple Computers. And so my wife jokes with me. She said, "Tom, you should have hung out with the electronics club more in high school." You and Steve could have been, you and the Woz. But 1,000 people came to the Gallo Center when he spoke, and they just were all ears. And there were lots of children there. It was so exciting and motivating. Because, you know, you need to have people that will inspire you, that will get you fired up, that, yes, there's a future for me in technology. There's other things that I can do. Because he was just one of the guys in high school. And he's no longer one of the guys. He and Steve Jobs. I mean, think of how the computers have changed our world, our life. You know, you talk about the Wright Brothers, and you talk about, but, I mean, there's a game changer right there. And he came to Modesto, and he got people all fired up. We just sent Lisa and Megan, the two ladies there, to Philadelphia this summer, where they received a national award. Look at that. We represented the state of California. The state of California, we were given the award, the Pace Setter Award, because of the work that we've been doing in trying to get young people reading at grade level. And so we're very proud of the work that's being done because we know that we have to do this. It's mandatory that we be competitive, that we want vibrant communities, and we want educated people living in our communities. And now I wanted just to let you know that not too long ago, the county office, we bought the Modesto B Building. And people are saying, "What'd you do that for? Oh, my gosh, it's perfect." Here's the deal. We're turning that into a regional workforce training center. So at the very front of the B Building, we're putting in a huge daycare facility. So these young people that are 18 to 28, and they've got small children, their daycare is an issue? Bring them in, because we'll have daycare right there. And then we have a program called Comeback Kids. And this Comeback Kid program, you get your high school diploma. You dropped out? Hey, come on back. Come on back. You don't have to worry about going to your old high school or being embarrassed. No, you do it. The teachers that work with these young people say they're the most motivated students. Average age is 28. Well, whatever happened between 18 and 28, we don't care. That's your backstory. What matters is what's going on forward right now in your life. And these kids are motivated. Half of the 800 graduates are enrolled at MJC or other colleges already. Because they've got the fire, motivation. It's amazing what that fire in the belly will do for people. We currently have 800 enrolled. So those 900 I told you about earlier that are dropping out, we're catching on, and we're bringing some of those back. And I can tell you that at a recent graduation, the mother, a 41-year-old mother of three was our keynote speaker. And we should have handed out Kleenex before the ceremony. Because when she got up and spoke, she said, "I came back for two reasons." Number one, and her kids and husband were in the front row. They had balloons, flower bouquets. It was awesome. She said, "I did it for my kids." Because how can I tell my kids to study, get good grades, and blah, blah, blah? And I don't even have a high school diploma myself. And she said, "The second reason I did it is because I believe or not have always wanted to work, and I couldn't get a job. I didn't have that piece of paper, and I couldn't work. And I want work." And she said, "This piece of paper will open doors for me." It's people like that that come back, they're in these programs, that are doing great things. So that's all in the Modesto B Building. But wait, there's more. Here's what's in the back. We have this program, we're partnered with, well, Cal knows all about that, this Volt Institute. And here's the deal with that. So this is for young men and women, just so happened, the first graduating class happened to be all men. But they were involved, they, some have jobs, but most just want to get some skills. So the local businesses call us up and say, "We have jobs in cement work and plumbing and carpentry and electrical, and we train them up." They come in there in the back where the Modesto B had all their old presses. It's a huge facility inside, almost 200,000 square feet. Oh, my land's alive. And we're filling it up with all this equipment. So you want to learn, get a forklift certificate? You come on down. We got it in the back. We got all this stuff going on in the back. These graduates, the first class in June, there's 30, look at that second bullet. 27 of them have jobs in hand when they got their certificate. 27 of the 30 have a good-paying job. And this one wife and her kids came up to me. She was hugging on me, crying. She said, "Oh, my gosh, I just can't tell you what this has done for us." She said, "My husband and I, for four years, have been managed in a trailer park, and that's all we could afford to do because we got to live there for nothing. My husband's got a job. He's a mechanic, and he's making a good wage, and we're moving into a, we're renting a three-bedroom house." She was bawling, tears coming down. She was so happy. You know what this is doing? It's giving people hope that the American dream is alive, and you can do it. You can pursue the dream. And that program right there, Cal knows all about it. He's part of the Workforce Board, and it's doing great things. You're changing lives around. We're changing families, and we're building stronger communities. That's what it's all about. So we're excited about that. But here's what's happening next. Destination Graduation, we're kind of closing the door on that. It's morphing into this new initiative. And the reason I'm going around to all the city councils, people come up to me, "Tom, you're wasting city council time. What are you doing?" I'm not, because the community needs to hear this. Because when it comes up, you need to say, "Oh, I heard about that. How can I get involved? How can I help?" It's called Cradle to Career. And this whole initiative is all about taking young people, birth all the way through to college or career. I say college or career. Because everybody doesn't have to go to college. College or career. And there's the mission, the vision, the values. This is great. We already have a working group of business people and educators. It's awesome. And this is going to be the next thing. And I wanted you to be like the second people to hear about it. Because I did speak at one city council meeting already, so sorry. Anyway, so this is, this is going to be a big deal. And I tell you why. Because remember earlier, we talked about the gap? Here's what's happening. For the first time in our county, and some of you will shake your head and say, "Well, that's not even rocket science." We have all 25 school districts using the same assessment measurement to see where our students are as far as being ready for kindergarten. It's a simple assessment. Teachers do it the first couple of weeks of kindergarten, and they can determine. Do the kids know color, shapes, numbers? Can they sit in a circle time? Just a simple little assessment to determine kindergarten readiness. Well, when we did that in our county, 31% of our kiddos are ready for kindergarten. 31%. So my sister's administrator over in the Bay Area, Lafayette Arinda, you know, whoop-de-doo over there. Well, anyway, she was saying, "Hey, we do that assessment, and our assessment in our community, 94%. Their kids, 94% kindergarten-ready." So, okay, well, what does that mean? It means we need to get books into the hands of families and parents so that they can work with their children and help them get prepared for kindergarten. And a lot of that has to do with just reading, playing, spending time with children. And that will make a difference. Because when we start kindergarten and we're at 31%, the gap, the education gap is already there. And it's hard to catch up on that because how many of those students are going to be reading at grade level in third grade? And you know, they build prisons based on the number of students that can't read at third grade. That's the mark they use. So, you know, are we backing away or backing down or saying, "Oh, my gosh, woe is us?" No, of course not. We're rolling our sleeves up, and we're saying, "We got a job to do. We're committed. We're dedicated. We got educators like Leanne up here." We're after it. We're after it. Because why? Because it matters. Because we're all in this together. We're all Americans, and we want the best for our children, our families, and this country. We're all Americans and we want the best for our children, our families and this country. So, that's my story. And here's, I finished with this. I'll close with this. So, to dream is to be filled with hope. I know this because I see the face Hope daily. And we have to be, especially in education, hope salesmen. Because if, if you don't inspire and instill hope in a young person, then they're done. So, that's what we have to do. And we're doing it, aren't we, Leanne? You see it all the time. You see it all the time. I'm telling you so. I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff and this great audience, thank you for allowing me to spread the word. Appreciate it. I went over my five minutes, sorry.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Just a second, so you're not done?
I'm not done, no.
No. Are there any questions or comments? I just have a comment. I lived in Japan for four years and during the four years, I lived right across from my high school. Right after high school, we let out each day, the kids went home, did their homework and then came back from six until eleven at night, back at school, learning what the next class was going to be the next day. They just don't go, you know, from seven in the morning till four in the afternoon, have their PE or whatever and then go home. They, they stay until eleven o'clock at night. So, those two hundred and thirty days a year is extended in hours by another fifty percent. So, and that's, that is because at one point, like at eighth grade, I believe it is, you take a test, you matriculate or you go find a job. You have to be in the top eighty percent, those at the bottom, and all of them may be almost equally as smart, but the bottom twenty percent start learning how to make sushi rice or cleaning or whatever. And then, after two more years in high school, they test again and then again, it's cut. And it's cut until, and you, there's no recourse to go back to school, even after they graduate or if they don't go to college, there's no recourse. You're now at the job that you do. So, there is a motivation.
Yes.
There is, a severe motivation. So, that's a different mindset than we have here and it would be difficult with our freedoms and our permissiveness to, to do what they do.
Right. Well, we just need to instill more of a sense of urgency with our young people that, you know, they need to start thinking. When I was growing up, we, family gatherings, people would always say, Tommy, what do you want to be when you grow up? You know, well, we grew up in Idaho on a farm, so, you know, you're going to be a farmer. But, but the point is, they'd always ask. And I don't hear people asking young kids, what do you want to be when you grow up? I don't, I don't hear that often enough. We need to kind of get back to that. Lisa's planting the seed.
Right.
Yeah. Well, thank you again. Appreciate your time and.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, there's a question from the back.
Actually, I used to work at the Family Resource Center here in Riverbank and we did Latino Family Literacy Project. One of the things that I've noticed that I think might be something that the county can do is really direct to the Spanish-speaking families, the importance of just singing, playing and reading to your children. Because a lot of times they feel like, why don't read in English? So, what good is it going to do? But understanding that, that, those skills that you're building will translate into English and having that focus also on education because, I'm not going to say all, but a lot of, I know in my family, it's just, school's good, but school's not a priority. And I think really focused because we do have a lot of Latinos, because those schools a priority, it's very important whenever they miss. So, I mean, I think being honest as Latinos and as Americans that, that that value is not as important in a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, but in some Latino families. But really, I don't know if you could do marketing to really convey that to Spanish-speaking families, singing, reading, playing, that that all lights up the synapses in their brain and that's going to help them be ready for kindergarten. Even holding a crayon, some kids don't know how to hold a pencil.
Yes, exactly.
And a crayon when they go to school. So, that was just a, just a remark I had and what you said is very true. That's why we're behind.
Well, thank you very much for those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
I apologize, I have to, another event.
Go, go.
I'd love to stay and listen for us to meet, but thank you anyway. All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Item two, public comments. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Tonight, I have public comment. And I, and ask the council if they have public comment, please do so. I observed the discussion that the candidate, for the candidates at the League of Women Voters Forum. And I have a few clarifications that I'd like to address. One, each year, there is a summit with working, working with nonprofits and faith-based groups. Riverbank has identified issues with low-income families and homeless. Based on discussions, we have come up with a program to assist the homeless, working with Stanislaus County. And we're looking into instituting a Hope Home-type facility based on Patterson's success, City of Patterson's success. The homeless will be given the opportunity to enter a program that will allow treatment, education and skills to enter back into society. When the homeless succeed, they will need transitional housing. We, the city, looking into providing units that can assist this transition. We have a great housing program that is addressing the housing needs up and down the spectrum. We have established programs and are looking into an RFP process for affordable housing developers. The city employees have done an excellent job in obtaining funds from housing and community development in the state level and the federal programs to assist the residents of Riverbank. And it's time that we move forward. Second, our cannabis program, while controversial, is working. We are managing this issue. Our Riverbank Police Service has recently shut down a grow facility and arrested those involved. If we had nothing in place, we could not act upon that. These are the individuals who supply marijuana to your youth. These are the individuals who supply the gateway drugs to your youth. These individuals are the reason why our cannabis program exists. We need to eradicate the dealers, pushers and the illegal drugs. Three, there was confusion on SB one versus Measure L. Proposition six is purporting to repeal SB one, removing over five billion annually from much-needed transportation infrastructure repairs. The funds are from gas tax and vehicle registration fees. These are transportation-related revenues. Well, some believe it is a burden for those who work and place, and for these increases. The increases are based on inflation. If increases aren't allowed to be fixed, to fix the roads, should other increases be denied, such as income, property values, commodities or others? Measure L, it was a little confusion, is a half-cent sales tax to fix local streets and roads, to provide bike and pedestrian paths, to increase traffic management projects and going, and for the trains. This is specifically for Stanislaus County. There is an oversight committee ensuring that these funds collected are being spent properly. Stan Cog representative here tonight can attest to that. Local transportation funding is now, has now gone away for the city and is being sent to the ACE. Congestion management and air quality federal funds are being threatened to support ACE. If Prop six passes, only Measure L funds will be available for Riverbank streets and roads and that is not adequate. And my final comment on that forum, the city projects in the future will ensure the success and sustainability of the city. This city council has done a superb job in planning properly and making very difficult decisions on community facility districts, the industrial complex, developer agreement and tax-sharing agreements. We, as a city council, will not let other agencies take advantage of our residents, even at the cost of controversy. We are committed to protecting our residents while providing the best in municipal services. That's what we do. I have been complimented on the progress and the success of Riverbank. Our city employees and our residents are the reason why Riverbank Council is so successful. Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Any other public comment? Hi.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor.
November third.
City Council. Are you sure? My name is Diane Talbert. I live at sixty-seven Nineteenth Seventh Street. And I'm here tonight to represent the Riverbank Chapter of Royal Neighbors. We have our annual eleventh Veterans Luncheon coming up and for the last eight years, the city council has come and honored us by being volunteer, or honorary, I should say, servers at the event. So, I'm here tonight to extend the invitation once again and hoping that you guys will accept it and looking forward at working with you at our luncheon.
Thank you.
And what I forgot to tell you, it's on November eleventh. It's at the new Stanislaus County Veterans Center this year.
On Sunday, the eleventh?
No, it's on, on November.
Third.
Third.
Okay.
It's eleventh annual.
Eleventh annual, okay.
Yeah, so November third. So, that's where we're holding it this year because we wanted to make sure we could still hold it because the community center is going to be renovated, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
November third.
We have a time?
Eleven hundred.
The doors open at eleven and we'll start serving at, at noon. And we'll provide you guys with lunch. It's a promise.
Boy, I tell you.
It can't last.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we move forward to the consent calendar. Insisting item three A, waive readings. Item three B, approval of October ninth, twenty-eighteen, City Council on Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item three C, a resolution approving amendments to the Stanislaus Council of Government StanCog bylaws and execution of an amended and restated joint powers agreement. Is there anyone on the council wishing to pull anything from the consent calendar? Is there anyone wishing to discuss anything on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I come back to council for consideration.
I make a motion, we approve the consent calendar, items three A, three B and three C.
Second the motion.
Well, motion to approve the consent calendar and a second.
Council authority members, Fosse. Yes. Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Public hearing, item five one, a resolution adopting a two-point-five Consumer Price Index increase in the rates for solid waste disposal services pursuant to the two thousand fourteen executed franchise agreement with Jilton Solid Waste Incorporated.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Maricela Garcia, will provide the report tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Based on the two thousand fourteen agreement signed with Jilton Solid Waste for presenting to you a two-and-a-half percent Consumer Price Index increase as authorized in that franchise agreement. So, just a little bit of background, Jilton's been providing service to our residents for over forty years. In October of two thousand fourteen, we held a protest hearing to review the rates and to receive any protest from our residents on that rate increase. We did not receive the fifty percent plus one protest votes that would allow the city council to deny the rate increase and so, the rate increase was placed into effect. We do have a five-year agreement with Jilton Solid Waste which expires in October of two thousand nineteen and which will be the final rate increase at that point in time. We'll redo a new rate study at that point and see if it warrants another rate increase after that. So, section nine point one of the agreement allows for an up to two-and-a-half percent rate increase based on the CPI for the prior year. The statistical area that we use is the San Francisco Oakland Hayward statistical area based on the past twelve years. Actually, that doesn't show up very well, the past twelve months, I'm sorry. The CPI increase was four-point-three percent. And so, with the cap of two-and-a-half percent, what we are proposing today is a two-and-a-half percent increase. What that means for our residents is that your typical ninety-gallon can will show an increase of fifty-seven cents a month, which equates to six dollars and eighty-five cents for the year. Our residents who are on our senior rate, those residents will see an increase of forty-three cents per month, which will equate to five dollars and fourteen cents for the entire year. We also have our commercial rates which will increase and Jilton Solid Waste does the direct billing for these particular customers. And so, tonight, we're recommending a two-and-a-half percent Consumer Price Index increase for our solid waste disposal rates. And just as a reminder to all, the services that we receive from Jilton include not just your curbside pickup of garbage and green waste, but also curbside pickup of bulky items two times per year. And we also have our electronic waste pickup twice a year that you're able to schedule with them. And then, we have our annual Christmas tree pickup service. Available for questions.
Any questions? This is a public hearing?
Scott McRitchie, City of Riverbank. Same old complaint, we need to go to monthly billing as soon as possible. We keep increasing rates here and there, water, waste disposal, so on. So, we do need to do that. And appreciate the people at the city hall that wait on people coming in with their bills. They've been able to accommodate some of the needier people on a monthly basis, which is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council. I close public hearing, bring it back to the council.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Mr. McRitchie, just a thought, if somebody does want to pay their bill monthly, they can do so. The, the bill comes out, you know, every two months, but if they want to send in a monthly payment, there's nothing that stops them from doing that. They would just, they could split it up on their own is what I'm saying. So, in a sense, it, it exists if they so want it. And we had a major discussion quite some time ago and sort of just left it that way because there were a lot of other factors that would make it more, much more expensive for our department if we make it just one hundred percent. We'd have to add more employees and send out more bills, et cetera. So, if you do want to pay it monthly, you can pay it monthly, but we had a discussion quite some time ago and backed away from it as a council because if we were to just make it a flat monthly service, then there'd be a lot more, we'd have to hire some more people, put bills out every month and it'd be much more cost for us. So, just remember, you can do it if you want to.
I think the point was that he does want it.
Is it still okay?
For you, yes. I, I, just a second. I reopen public hearing.
Marilyn McRitchie, Riverbank, California. I had a thought, how about putting in, an postscript or whatever in the bill saying that it's okay to do this, rather than leaving it up to everybody to maybe someone will come and say, you could do this when you go in to pay your bill. But would it hurt to add one, one line, letting people know that this is an option? I don't know.
We can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Boy, this public comment got out of, public hearing got out of. I'm re-closing public hearing. Okay. Comments noted and, and we're all in it, we're looking at ways. We still have to come up with a couple more items before we can execute it. Okay, do I have any comments or any recommendation of item five point one? Then I will move that we approve item five point one. Then I will move that we approve Item 5.1, a 2.5% Consumer Price Index increase in rates of solid waste disposal services.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, and a second on Item 5.1.
Council members, Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell? Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.1, a resolution amending the City of Riverbank Compensation Plan to reflect the new salary range for the accounting manager's position from range 146 to range 166.
Thank you, Mayor. Maricela's going to be up for the next couple items.
Thank you, Cindy.
She will take this.
In 2013, the Riverbank City Council authorized the creation of an accounting manager position. The reason being is that that time, the Director of Finance position was taking on additional duties to assist the city manager, and we felt a need to have a managerial position to oversee the day-to-day operations of the finance department. When we created that position, we had an existing accountant that we felt would fit the description or would be able to fill the manager position. And so we simply took their salary range at that time and inflated it by 20%, which has been our usual difference between a supervisor and their subordinates. In reality, what we should have done was then a compensation study to see what the market was for that particular position. But because we were promoting from within, we felt that this was an inadequate fix. Now, what we've realized is that there's been a significant discrepancy between the manager position that we have and the other manager positions within the City of Riverbank. So what I'm going to bring up is our compensation schedule for our managers and our supervisors. The highlighted items, the first is the accounting manager who's at range 146. The other two manager positions that we have, which is our Building and Planning Manager, they're at range 176. And then we have a Development Services Administrative Manager who's at range 166. Our accounting manager position salary range is also at the same salary range as our Senior Management Analyst and our Senior Management Analyst/City Clerk, which are two positions that are currently not managerial positions in that they don't oversee any staff. And so we feel that, at this time, an equity adjustment to bring that accounting manager position to the same level, or to a consistent level with the other two managerial positions that we have within the city would be fair and just. And not only will it assist us in retention of our current employees, but also in any future recruitment should we have a vacancy.
So that concludes?
That concludes my staff.
I was waiting for that. Okay. Are there any questions of Maricela? None?
No.
All right. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on Item 6.1? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for... Sure, come on up.
A school district had a similar discrepancy a few years ago, and I just asked for one thing. Dr. Kemp did it. I asked for what similar cities or similar school districts paid a similar employee, because that kind of tells us what the market really is. So I just wondered if any study's been done to see what similar cities of our size for this particular position get paid.
We did a comp, a class and compensation study. Okay. It's 18 months old or less?
Well, if I could just add on to that, so in the report, there's a little bit of narrative about why, in that actual report, the accounting manager position was not analyzed, and that was because it was vacant at the time. And so part of the class and comp study is you have to get some questionnaires back from the person actually doing the job so you can get an idea about what their actual day-to-day duties are, and then get apples-to-apples comparison with other organizations. So since we didn't have that as part of that study, we did a little one internally, Maricela and I did. And what we find, interestingly, with this position is that it really varies greatly across jurisdictions, because some are very direct. The managerial position title is really a misnomer. They're essentially a senior accountant that does a lot of the number-crunching kind of work and maybe less of the managerial side. Some of it's much more managerial. In other words, that's mostly what they're doing. But in general, we found that we were on the lower scale regionally, and this would put us, we believe, kind of right in the middle. In addition, this particular position is a little bit unique in that this position does a lot of that number-crunching work, but also a lot of that managerial work of all of the clerks and staff that do utility billing and business licensing and all those kinds of things. But it's a great question, because that is the way to do it. Yep. I didn't read that report.
Any other further public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back again. This is going to be repeats, I guess, to recommendation of Item 6.1.
I make a motion that we approve Item 6.1.
I second.
A motion to approve, and a second on Item 6.1.
Council members, Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, a resolution to award bid for wastewater treatment plant, WWTP, Pond 9 Levy Project to Garrett Thompson Construction, Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute future change orders and authorize the reallocation of $275,000 from the rate study-funded line-item replacement project to the rate study-funded Pond 9 at the WWTP project.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a, Maricela's going to give the general report on this. There are three items here. There's a little bit to chew on, and so let's, she's going to step you through some of the detail, and then I have a couple things to add when she's done.
So in 2015, when we were working on the sewer rate study, the Public Works Department went through and did an inventory of our current sewer lines, our wastewater treatment plan, and came up with a list of capital improvement projects that really needed to be done. Some of them were labeled as high priority, and others were just additional CIP items that needed to be addressed, particularly when it came to upgrading sewer lines in the older parts of town. One of the items that we included as a high priority project was this wastewater treatment plant, Pond Number 9. And the reason that it needed to be addressed is that it will help us to accommodate some of our short-term growth that we're going through at the moment. So it's been a project that's kind of been on the back burner, but that we've known that has been a high priority item for a number of years now, especially with the growth that we've gone through over the past couple of years. At that time, the original estimate was $98,000. We were going to do some modifications to it, and we felt that that budget was sufficient enough. In 2017, we started doing the engineering on that and quickly came to realize that that $98,000 was not going to take us very far. And so we asked for some additional funding through the mid-year budget from operations of $43,900. That gave us total funding of about $142,000. Of that $17,000 was spent on the actual engineering. And so that gave us really a construction budget of $125,000. So fast forward another year, since 2015, and it's now been three years, so we've had costs that have escalated, particularly in the construction arena. And in order to get the ponds to where we need them to be and to be safe for our staff to be able to navigate on, we've gone out to bid. The low bid that came in was at $406,000. And so the shortfall that we currently have is $280,900. So some of the reasons why we feel that the bids came in significantly higher were obviously increasing in fuel costs. We have prevailing wage, which has gone up quite significantly over the past couple of years. And we have just general construction activity that has increased, and so we've got a bit of a competition with, you know, other cities and other jurisdictions that are doing similar type projects in our area. So what we would like to do, because this is a project that is being funded through our rate study, we would like to swap out the funds from one project to another. That way, we don't have to review our rates, go back and recommend a rate increase specifically for this project. What we will end up doing is we will end up putting that sewer line replacement on a subsequent sewer rate study as a high priority project at that point in time. So at this point, we are recommending a reallocation of $275,000 from our sewer line replacement project. This one happens to be on Patterson Alleyway from First to Eighth Street. It was unfortunately the big-ticket item that we had in this current year's budget that we were going to work on. That was the easiest to say that we could delay a number of years. Although the project does need to happen, and we felt that it was not dire enough that we couldn't wait a couple more years before that project could be done. So we'll be moving the funds from that project to this particular project here. And that's, so the other items that we are requesting are not only awarding the bid to Garrett Thompson Construction, but then also authorizing the city manager to execute any future change orders on that contract.
And just to add to Maricela's report, so to be frank, we were, we thought that the price was going to be higher, because nearly every bid we're going out with currently is coming in higher, not this high. So the question that everybody would ask, common sense, would be, "Well, is this an anomaly? What if we waited?" Those kinds of things. And I want to address a couple of those real quick, just so that we can kind of frame the issue. Normally, I would be concerned that this is an anomaly, but when you have three pretty well-known contractors that bid on this project that are all within essentially $15,000 of one another, that's the price. That's the market price. And so the reason why, if Michael Riddell, our Public Works Director, if he was, he's on vacation this week, but he and I talked for quite a bit about this, this issue. The important thing to remember is that there were many years in Riverbank where our wastewater treatment facility would overflow as a result of super-heavy rains or hydraulic loads that were heavier than the pond can handle. And that's a concern, because the regional board, which sort of rules over our wastewater plant, really doesn't like to see that, and they will fine the city if we, if that happens. And so we've really just sort of got along, really by luck, for quite some time without having this necessary levy in place. And so in his professional opinion, and he's been in wastewater for 30 years, this was a much more important project for the utility as a whole at this stage than the line for First to Eighth Street, which he said, "We can keep going at optimal conditions by additional cambering and patching and additional preventative maintenance over the next couple of years so that it doesn't affect any of the folks that live in that area." So that's why we feel comfortable recommending that to the council tonight. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I do. So you stated that this would help to accommodate short-term growth. So does that mean in the future, when we start building more and development more, that we will have to have an additional pond? Or is this going to be like infield, and we just keep, you know, working on just Pond Number 9?
So that one in the report had, I had a chance to sort of rewrite. I would have written it a little bit differently. I spoke to a member of the public about this just the other day, because she was concerned, you know, why should the repairs have to pay that? Let me be clear. If we didn't build another home in Riverbank for the next 25 years, this pond would still need to be completed. It's substandard currently. It still exists currently. What we're essentially doing is finishing it. Now, will, will the plant accommodate future growth? Yeah, it's rated to accommodate future growth currently. It has been for many years, since the cannery essentially went out of business. But to answer your question more directly, Vice Mayor, either way, the pond needs to get built with or without any future growth.
In the fund transfer that you're taking from the Sierra Patterson Alley from First to Eighth, it's $275,000. And then you have currently a $98,000, and that comes up to $373,000.
So we're short just a little bit, but the reason that we're not asking for anything over and above that is that the sewer capital improvement fund has its own allocation that we do every year, and so there's going to be funds available there to be able to cover the balance. We didn't want to have to risk having to delay another project by taking funds from, just a small portion of funds from that to move it here. So we were able to use the capital improvement funds that we allocate for emergency purposes, which so far, we haven't had any, thank goodness, and use it towards this project.
Can we have an update, not tonight, on the capital improvement program? Because you're taking funds from 2015, '16, I believe that's the fiscal year, and moving on to 1819, where I would have expected, since we approved it, we would have had some completions. And then you're also taking the pond from '16, '17, and moving it to 1819.
Well...
Again, I understand where the necessity is, but are any of the other projects that we allocated not funded, not completed?
So there's been a number of projects that we haven't been able to complete, simply because what we were hoping to do was be able to bond for absolutely all of the projects. And Michael and I decided at that time that with the RDA coming through, that it probably was not the best market or in time for the city to bond. So we chose to delay. What that allowed us to do was build up a reserve for our capital improvement projects. So all of the projects that we have listed in our fiscal year 2018, '19 budget are, is actually cash on hand that we have available. And so we didn't have a need to go out and bond. So there shouldn't be any difficulty with continuing to fund any of the future projects.
Okay. By delaying, this is what you get?
Correct.
You get the increases. Because right now, construction is at the maximum with, although if SB 6 passes, we may have companies out of business, so we might be able to get lower rates, but don't count on it. Don't bet on it. Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Oh, I'm sorry. Any other? Nope. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion that we accept 6.1, 6.2 as so stated.
I second.
Item 6.2, awards the bid to the lowest bidder, authorize the city manager to execute change orders, and authorize the reallocation. We have a first and a second.
Council members, Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.3, information on the Ninth Circuit decision, Martin versus Boise, implications to public space.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Okay. So this is going to be a difficult item. Just going to warn everyone. Chief Kylie and I have probably spent, I don't know, a dozen hours, half a dozen hours talking about this over the last couple of weeks, and I don't know that we've made any progress, really. So what I'm going to do is, for though, this is as much for the council as it is for the community, a little education session on this decision, what it means for our community. And then we'll talk a little bit more about homelessness in general, and then maybe, and council can provide some direction if desired tonight, or this may be one of those items that you want to let set in for a little bit, and we'll discuss it at a future meeting. So I'll leave that up to the mayor and council. So Martin v. Boise. So the case is filed in 2009, and it centered around a challenge to the City of Boise anti-camping law. Specifically, the City of Boise had an ordinance, which is commonly known as an anti-camping ordinance, which prohibits sleeping or camping in public spaces without permission. A group of homeless residents, I think six homeless residents, challenged the ordinance, and the case made its way through the court system. On July 13th of 2017, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals at the federal level heard arguments on this case. And then about a year later, a little more than a year... And then about a year later, a little more than a year later, they filed their decision on the case. The case was set to consider whether the enforcement of the ordinance violated the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution, which prohibits cruel and unusual punishment. More specifically, the court considered whether the Eighth Amendment would bar the enforcement of this ordinance, meaning anti-camping ordinance, when no suitable alternatives for shelter exist. The decision essentially reads that the Eighth Amendment does prohibit the enforcement of these types of ordinances in specific circumstances. The opinion states that, among other things, the Eighth Amendment placed a substantive limit on what governments may criminalize. The Circuit Court judge quote here, I think, is pretty telling as to sort of the general, the opinion's very long, but this kind of sums up in a nutshell. As a result, just as the state may not criminalize the state of being homeless in public places, the state may not criminalize conduct as unavoidable, an unavoidable consequence of being homeless, namely, sitting, lying, or sleeping on the streets. However, it's important here that the ruling would not apply to those who have access to shelters. So we're going to talk a little bit about where this scopes down and how that applies to Riverbank here in just a moment. So here are a couple takeaways. Most important takeaway, at least from a local government perspective, is what Chief and I have been talking about most of the last couple of weeks, is it puts law enforcement in this very weird gray area. If you rewound a month ago, and we had a situation, we had an individual that was sleeping in a park, and we got a complaint, it would be very simple for the chief to send an officer over, and his officers would try to get that person to some services, or if they refused, you know, order them to leave the park if necessary. And being that it's a municipal law, you know, the police have the ability to cite and, if necessary, arrest in certain circumstances. This decision puts those sorts of more punitive measures, I mentioned toward the end of that statement, at risk. It does not appear to prohibit law enforcement, however, from continued enforcement of trespassing on private property. It's important to understand that it does not directly require communities to build homeless shelters. Communities may look at opportunities to provide reasonable alternatives to public camping. And it's been reported, more recently, the City of Boise is going to appeal this decision to the full panel of the Ninth Circuit, so we'll see what happens with that. But until that time, and this decision stands, and if the timeline of the first hearing of the case is any indicator, this isn't likely to change for a while. Implications for Riverbank. So important to note, technically, we do not have an anti-camping ordinance in Riverbank. We have just normal hours of operation, which it's a little different, I think, for Jacob Myers Park, but in general, it's 6:00 AM, and they stay open until 1:00 after dusk. And it's a violation for someone to be in park after normal hours. So you're probably thinking, well, where does that put us? And the answer is, we don't know. It's not, while it's not technically a no camping ordinance, it's unclear whether a court would interpret this ordinance that essentially what you're doing is the same exact thing, you're just calling it something different. So it may not be no camping, but if I can't stay past 9:00 o'clock, and I've got nowhere else to go, what would you call it? So although Riverbank has a variety of different supportive and affordable housing, currently there are no shelter-type services in Riverbank. And the shelters we do have, there are two low-barrier shelters, which, or no barrier. Actually, there's two low-barrier shelters in Stanislaus County, and they're over in Modesto. There is no no-barrier shelter. And for those of you who don't know the difference, and I'm learning this too, a no-barrier shelter is essentially one that has very little of any rules about using those services. So for example, there, if you go to a faith-based shelter, they have a certain set of criteria that they, that you must meet to come in with regard to, you know, not bringing in substances like alcohol, some of them have rules about animals, some of them have faith-based components to what they require for you to stay. A no-barrier shelter would just be more of a basic homeless shelter where there's very few rules, it's a place for you to sleep at night, and then you leave in the morning. And we do not have one of those at all countywide currently. So one of the, and one of the things that Chief mentioned to me prior to the meeting that's important here is that when you're scoping this decision down, essentially what the court's saying is, if you have homeless people that are camping or sleeping in your public spaces, and they have no suitable alternative to shelter, whether that be a shelter, or some other housing program, or some other public space that's been delineated, it is not legal to cite them or force them out of those areas under the Eighth Amendment. And furthermore, the court sort of mentioned in the decision that those shelters probably need to be low-to-no-barrier shelters, so that, you know, they're widely available to the greatest number of people who may be homeless. So with all that said, the main point of tonight is that we want as staff to be, have the council and community be up on these types of latest issues as soon as humanly possible, when they come out, so that we're not dealing with a problem that may occur sometime in the future and coming back to council and saying, you know, what do we do? I mentioned to a few council members and a few members of the public that I talked to before this meeting that there's no answers here tonight. I don't have a great recommendation, it's a very, very difficult issue. We do have a homeless population in Riverbank, we do have a population sometimes that camps in Riverbank as well. And what you're seeing in some other jurisdictions that have larger homeless problems, like, for example, Modesto, is the city has essentially decided to delineate one park in the interim while they're figuring this whole situation out as the park that they can redirect homeless folks to who have nowhere else to go. And that's currently Beard Brook Park, Beard Brook Park has been the news quite a bit. So the most important things for tonight, I think, to discuss are public education of decision, especially with regard to the possibility of increased camping within Riverbank. There's been some of this, some discussion of this online recently in our community, and we have seen some increase in that. Discussions of alternatives for shelter, such as public property, specific park locations, public-private partnerships, shelters, and future housing options, policy considerations regarding code amendments to our code, and continued coordination and cooperation with Stanislaus County and other jurisdictions in our county that affect change on the homelessness rates in our region. We, at the staff here, council here, and myself in particular, have been spending a lot of time engaged on a every-other-week basis, basically, with a coalition that's working on different innovative programs to tackle this homelessness problem and provide solution for these people that, many of whom need assistance, and there's nowhere to get it. So there's a lot of positive going on, there's a lot of money that is being filtered down at the state level, that's going to come into the county, that will give us opportunities. But more generally, we wanted to give you an update on the case and have council sort of talk it through a little bit. Answer any questions, I'm sure there'll be plenty. Oh, and also, if you have any questions, the chief, he's been around this issue quite a bit, too, so.
I have a couple of comments first. If you work backwards, or you work to your ultimate goal, is to be able to get the homeless into low-income housing. That's the goal. But before that, you have to give them the training, to get them cleaned up, education to get a job. And that is a transitional housing, similar to what the Host Home in Patterson has. So our problem right now is that we don't have the Host Home or transitional housing, but that need is being met. What we don't, but I think that we should look at it for the east side of the county, as well as specifically for the City of Riverbank. So the problem is, what do we do with the homeless in a sheltered type of a situation? I don't want a no-barrier. That's where you're going to have drugs, alcohol, weapons, without any consequences. In a low-barrier, you're going to have animals, alcohol, drugs, possibly weapons. And that's, again, that's problematic, I see, as a liability. The Riverbank Industrial Complex, before it was given to the City of Riverbank, was offered up by the federal government as a homeless, I guess, facility, but there was, there were no takers. So there may be an option out there where we can shelter them until we can get in a transitional housing and low-income housing, to where we can abandon a shelter because we do have, or we will have, abilities to transition, educate, clean up, and then get them into low-income housing. The important thing is the low-income housing. We're looking at an RFP process on it, we may have to go faster on that, to see if we can get people come in and do low-income housing, specifically for transition from, you know, a host type of a home to the transit. Now, in low-income housing, if you don't have an income, you don't pay the housing, but you still have to follow rules. As you make money, you start paying more and more towards that housing until you make enough money to buy your way out of the low-income housing into additional housing. And so, if we could institute that, I believe we could move forward in tackling our portion of the homeless. But I'm going to make this statement, and it's not Riverbank's problem. It's not the county's problem. It's society's problem. So we have to tackle it as a whole. If we come up with a solution, we have to embrace those solutions as a society. There are individuals that are there that probably should not be on the streets, but should be in institutions, but we, as a society, said we will abandon them. But we can't abandon the individuals. We can abandon the institutions, but we can't abandon the individuals. So I believe we should look for ways to fund low-income housing locally, so we can capitalize on the state funding that is coming down. Now, we may get some funding out of the state, but it has to be sufficient enough to build the housing that is available, and as they transition out, have enough reserve to repair and replace items in those homes or housing units, and to move on, whether it is apartment complex, or it's actual housing. So we've been thinking about this for a while, this is just bringing it to a head. So I think it's time that we act on the thoughts that we've had for the last two years. That's my thought.
I had a question. Where does the bank on the river, where does it fall into all of this?
Interesting question. So another thing Chief and I have been talking about.
Is it Army Corps of Engineers?
Yeah, so it's federally owned, so technically, it's public property. So the problem with the decision, from at least my perspective, is that it, although it's narrow in a sense, it's also broad in a sense. We really don't know how far the decision goes until little, smaller situations end up getting challenged and work their way through the court system. But if you take the most sort of conservative approach, it would be that that's public property, and the only difference may be that if it's an area that's unsafe for some reason, or that the Army Corps has deemed is not a place for humans to be walking and enjoying like any other park space, perhaps you could enforce trespass laws there, but even that's unclear to us.
I've got a comment. I served on a committee that reviewed grants last spring, and the committee was doing it for nonprofits, and a lot of them was for homeless shelters and whatnot. Something that I noticed, I will allude, the mayor's brought it up, is on the east side, no grants were being given, there's nothing here. And yet, on the west side, Patterson is, has got something, Turlock has got something, Modesto is working with several different things and options. And so, I think the mayor did a nice job of explaining things, and I would like to look into possibly working with some of the other cities on the east side, possibly doing some type of regional center, that we could have something to go to if we needed it. Another question I want to ask is, with what you proposed here in this discussion, what happens if, say, the homeless are there camping out, and you have some place to put them, but they don't want to go?
So that's where the decision is, it does seem to be fairly clear. If the alternative is reasonable for the majority of the population, in other words, there's space, there's not a whole list of requirements, it's not 50 miles away, you know, things like that, it does appear that you can ask them to leave and then redirect them to this location, because there's a reasonable alternative where they can otherwise exist. The line that we keep coming back to is that it cannot be a crime to exist somewhere. So so long as there's a reasonable alternative, then you can enforce generally your ordinances. We would, then you could cite them and go through all those normal procedures. Yep.
Okay, so since we have centers that they can go to in Modesto, who's going to be checking to see if the facilities are full or not, before we send them on their way? Or is that our responsibility to check, or have someone to check before we say, go?
So let's say that, let's say that a facility exists that was large enough to handle our population, and it was close enough to, that was reasonably accessible. We still don't understand quite whether or not the decision means every little individual community needs to have one, or, you know, we're less than a mile from Modesto on the north side, we're pretty close, does that count as close enough and reasonable? Those things are not clear. But let's say that that was the case, and there was a large low-barrier, low or no-barrier shelter that people could go to. It would be probably all of the jurisdiction's responsibility to make sure that there was adequate beds and availability there before a police officer is moving somebody on, I'm guessing, we haven't got there yet, but Chief, jump in.
We haven't gotten there yet. We don't, yeah, as was already mentioned, we don't have such facilities at this point in time in Stanislaus County. So, you know, that's, that's first and foremost. You have to have an alternative place for people to go. And until we get to that point, the other, we really can't even consider other ways of managing all of this, so.
But if we could provide a low-barrier shelter, unless, let's assume that Contadina or the Ganji property says, hey, you know, I have this empty warehouse, and we provide, you know, we can have some services in their shower, head facility, bathroom facilities, you know, areas for them to sleep, and it'd be adequately protected from the elements, that would solve the initial have a shelter. But that's not the end-all.
No, it's not the end-all, it would just, it would give the ability to enforce your ordinances because they would have that option, a good viable option, where you don't have parameters that are set, that are going to keep certain individuals from being able to go there. So, and you're, you know, your hours of operation, certain religious parameters, requirements, and all the other things that are mentioned, as soon as you start adding those elements, then you're starting to, to basically eliminate that as an option, so.
For, Cal, you made a point about it's being given to Patterson and other cities. 10:00 on Thursday, Host House in Patterson is having an open house and a discussion on what it took to get it there. You're welcome to come on in and sit down and listen to it and where we're going. I will be there, but a little late, but I will be there. And then they're going to serve lunch afterwards, so you get the feeling, the feel for the entire facility. And we have to have, to get a grant, you have to have a, you have to have the ability to use that grant. So if we can show that we are going to emulate Host House in Patterson, we can say, we're going to host it here, but you need a nonprofit, you need, you know, a facility, and you need educators, people who gets treated, and then a transitional housing. So all of these parts... So, all of these parts, we're not there yet. And I like working backwards. That's the best way I get things done. We need to have where they can get out of, into, that would be the low-income housing. So, we need to get that first. Then we can have that Host House transition them into. No sense getting treatment and ready to go to work, and I have no place to go, because I'm right back on the streets. And then when I have that transitional, then I can say, this shelter here is in the vicinity of wherever we have a transitional home or facility, and we could even have it in the same spot if we wanted to, to say somebody was generous enough. I'm not gonna put the Masons on the line, but they have a good facility. But, you know, but you have Contadina, you also have the industrial complex where we may have a, a building available, but that would be up to our master developer. There's a lot of moving parts, but it can be done. We just have to be creative in the initial and the end stage for, for the housing.
Everything you say is true. I think that also as a community, we need to prepare for the, the reality that when you're dealing with, you know, a certain amount of homeless people, they are what's referred to as resistant. In other words, they, they don't want help, they don't want to transition, they're not looking for a change in their lifestyle. And so, you also have to prepare for that percentage of the population that you're, you can offer all the opportunity you want, but you're still gonna have a percentage that you, you just, they don't, they're not looking for a change. So, and actually, one of the individuals that, I was at the last meeting we were at, he made the comment, and he was homeless himself, so he had a good reference point he was speaking from, but he made, he made the comment that he found out that if you, if you build it, they won't come. Now, he was making reference to a program that he started that, there was a lot of effort put out, they had everything set up, and they had some very modest numbers as far as participation. And he was just acknowledging that realization that, that you, you are going to be able to help a certain number of individuals, and that's a noble thing, and something we shall be doing as a society, but you're also gonna have those that, they're not looking for a change, so.
That's true. Some are looking for change immediately, some you have to convince to make a change. If you keep suggesting then, those that will change, but they need persistence, and then you have the hardcore that will not, who's been homeless for 25 years, have no desire to live any other different life. You're right. But the majority want to change their situation, especially when it's cold and rainy, and there's no facilities available.
I agree.
When, when it, if you have a major rain event, the homeless know about it, and you could see along 108 where they take shelter under where the car wash is, the spray car wash, you can see encampments over there. There's a, a gas station that's not being used anymore, they're underneath there, so those are the people that probably you could start interacting with. How many, we have a count twice a year. How many do we have in Riverbank?
It seems like it hovers right around 23 is the number that I see when they do the point-in-time counts. That's an average.
We also need to consider the 20 families that we know of that are moving from house to house to house. And to me, those are the ones that you need to capture. There's a school knows about them, but they move quite frequently from neighbors to relatives and stuff, and those are the ones that if you could get them out of that homeless state and into low-income housing right away, they could start changing their lot in life almost immediately. They want to change immediately, but they, again, we have to provide that housing.
So, the other component I just thought I'd mention throughout there, I talked a little bit about it when I spoke at the Women's Club last week, is I just think it's really important that as, this is a difficult issue, it's gonna be very sensitive to the community, especially when we may have situations in the future where small camps pop up in public parks, parks that are in residential communities, and there's going to be a lot of members of the public that have a very tough time grappling with that fact and why the city can't immediately address that issue. And so, I just think it's really important that we remember that there's a level of compassion that is so important here, because this is a, as you mentioned, Mayor, is a societal issue, and it, it's not solvable just at Riverbank. It's, it's gotta be a little bit more widespread than that.
I would counter that. I, I, you wanna say something before I do?
I did. I was, okay, I was just gonna mention the piece about funding. There have been pilot programs, they only last for six months at a time, and so the other piece I wanted to say is that it takes money to offer them services, to have a place for them, and you can't just say, okay, we've got all these services for you to go to.
You need those.
How do, how do they get there?
You need the facilities and the services.
Exactly. And, you know, with some people, like anybody else like me, you have to be reminded, okay, you gotta go do this, you gotta go do that. So, it, it just takes more than just a few people that are trying to, to do this, so.
And good point. The county is gonna get how much, 11 million dollars?
Well, if we're successful, I think the initial funding is 7.3 plus about another three, and, and that's for now, one time, but the state is sort of awoken to this issue, and so they're going to be pouring massive resources into this in the next couple of years, and so now's the time to really address it.
And we need to address it in different ways, which, stay tuned for Thursday's or Friday's But I'm gonna counter the public parks. Because you say you can go into a public place, it doesn't have to be every public place, because parks belong to those who are paying their property taxes, and the quality of our life is reflected directly on the quality of our parks. A park, yes, you can camp there, but if you are providing an alternative that is not in a park, that should be the place where they should be directed. And I am not a fan of saying our parks are now, can be held hostage.
So, what's the alternative place would be my question?
Right out here, someplace else where we can have a head facility. No, something that is, yeah.
I think we, we, as a community, we're gonna have to designate that, because the, I can read you a, a part of the case decision, but it's fairly ambiguous at times, and the problem is that we like dealing with black and white when we enforce the law, because if push comes to shove, then we have to be able to justify our actions and...
Right. And that's why I suggest that, a, a industrial complex, there are a couple of buildings that are nice, that have a roof over the head, and there's some access to restroom facilities.
Yeah, I could think of one or two options.
Yeah, and that can be temporary until we can get our program going. And that way, you don't, you, it's not out of sight, out of mind. Don't get me there. But if you have individuals using needle drug use, they don't care where the needles go. Now you make that park unusable.
I, I agree, but it just has to be a collective decision made as to what the alternative's gonna be.
Well, tonight's not a decision, it's information.
Right.
I, I hope we can tackle this. When do we have strategic planning?
December-ish.
December-ish.
Well, so, I, I think that what I would suggest is, we're gonna go back and really think about this issue. What I did not want to do is put the community or in the council in a position of saying, okay, we gotta choose a location, or they're all up for grabs, here, here's your choices, and send you a list. It's, it's a lot to think about. But what we can do in the meantime is do a little bit more research on some of the concepts that each one of you has brought up, and any other questions that the public might have that wanna contact me individually, I'd be happy to talk about it. And, and bring something back that's a little more fully formed with different policy ideas that you could have as an interim locate, step, and then as the shelter situation sort of more fully forms in the county, we can have a, a final policy on how we wanna, how we wanna handle it.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and I'm asking for public input. Sir?
I got it.
Please, you have to get up to the microphone.
I'm Ben Talbert. I live on Seventh Street, 6107, right across from the school district. We've been having a lot of problems over there with homeless people sleeping over at the school. And I brought it up to Kylie, and he told me there's nothing they could do, but they're over there sleeping and doing drugs and stuff. And it's not every night, but most during the week, but it's off and on. And I talked to Darrell, the superintendent, they've been finding needles and all kinds of stuff over there too, and there's nothing been done. So, we, my neighbor and I, we called to tell them that they're doing drugs. We stand outside for a long time, nobody comes, or the sheriff. Thank you.
Do I just like to clarify? I don't believe I ever told you that nothing could be done when I said the schools have to be actively involved when it comes to certain properties, depending on where it's at. Sometimes we need a trespass authorization letter signed, sometimes we need people to sign complaints when we're enforcing trespass for other entities because of liability issues, because the problem is that if we, if we see individuals on, whether it's private property or certain grounds, Corps of Engineers, you know, if we don't have that, that authority to enforce trespass for them, then what happens is, if we have a use of force, somebody is hurt, they go to jail, and then we don't have something signed, then we end up with no footing legally, both civilly and criminally, and it's just, that's just not a, an area that we can operate from.
The school, the, the school is a, a government entity in itself. It has its own abilities to regulate or, or control, and then if they decide to say no trespass, especially if it's an endangerment to students and staff such as needles, something can be done if there is an alternative. And that's where we have to provide an alternative. And I don't want to offer up Jacob Myers Park Campsite at all, but I would offer up some other building if it becomes available.
I just want to, I want to clarify, Dr. Camp came to our senior brunch last week, and I spoke to him about that and told him that there was mention about him getting no trespassing signs posted, and he wrote it down, and he says, I call it, you know, to his group, you know, to, to make a decision to post no trespassing on there. And they did have a, two janitorials now, one in the night that does all the buildings, and they have one that comes in like 6:00 in the morning before the kids go and make sure all drug paraphernalia and stuff is cleared up before the kids get there. So, he, they're trying to do, be proactive, but he never thought about the no trespassing stuff, so I brought it up to him, 'cause of what Officer Kylie had mentioned, so.
Yeah, and he has to bring it to his board?
Yeah, he has to bring...
There's a process?
I told him it's a lot cheaper buying a few signs and posting than have a kid get a needle or something, you know, and get, so he said he never, I don't know why they didn't think about it, but I just brought it to him, so.
Thank you. Sir?
Fred Wood again, Riverbank, California. I teach at Adelante High School, right across from our neighbors here. I didn't realize this could be here. We have been finding quite a few stuff left there, and as of today, they've designated Mr. Jason Soriano, one of the janitors slash maintenance men, to be on our campus early, try to get all that removed. They have contacted the police office, uh, police department, sheriffs, once or twice, just to tell someone to get off campus. School's about to start, so that is a, a constant problem there. And I know, we all know this is a tough issue, it's a, it's a big society issue. I pastor in this town, and right now, behind my house in the alley, is people living in a car, people that has another man that was sleeping there for a while. He's moved on, he's, he's down south on Fourth Street now. I see him go down there in the evening. I guess, put a single Y's right in the alley, you know, that's what, they're already there, you know? None, none of us want them right at our house. I have worked, let me, let me name names, okay? I won't name any last names. These are homeless people that our church, me as a pastor, either I fed, I've rented rooms, I've let them stay in the churchyard before. Andrea, Brett, Dave, Sean, Levi, Monica, Greg, Dennis, and I forget Greg's, Greg had a lady with him, I forget her name. So, if there's around 23, that means about half of them, okay? And, and I know most of their last names. As a minister, I don't like the feelings I have sometimes because I'm becoming less compassionate. When you work with them one-on-one, it almost makes you, I'm supposed to be a man of compassion. And a lot of the problem is drugs, there are some mental issues. There was a lady that we had church with at the nursing center. No, she lived across the street at Woods Boarding House, they're not related to me, but Woods Boarding House. She is now on the streets of Modesto, and she is so burnt, okay? And I'm not trying to put her business out there, she just is. She don't have the mental capacity to be on the street, and yet she has the right to be on the street, because the, my, my dad had to be putting a home as he got older and had dementia, and that, that mental, being, putting someone in a, in a, in a home for mental reasons, the, the pendulum swings. And they say right now, it's hard to put someone in there that don't want to be. My dad did not want to be in a mental home, and yet he would roam in the rain and in the cold, he'd just take off without a jacket or anything. The county come to us and said, you have to put him in a home. We said, we know, he won't go, and the law, it won't help us. They said, we'll help you. And that's how my dad got in home. We hated to put him in a home. And yet, it was either that or tie him to the bed, 'cause he'd sneak out, he just had enough built. If you're not dealt with it, that's, that's where things, so yes, we have some, with mental issues, a lot of these that I named here, several of them was raised right here in this town, went through our school districts, and yes, it's a, it's a society problem, but it is our problem too. And it's hard to know how to deal with it, and yes, it's gonna take a lot of money, but let me tell you, every time I've dealt with them, it takes lots of supervision. If you open up a building, you might as well plan on hiring another police officer to just spend the night in the building, armed and ready, all right? That's just how it is. One of them threatened me, I told him, you gotta leave the church, there's rules on this ground, you don't want to abide by, you gotta leave. I knew, well, his dog, his dog is a pretty mean dog, part pit, and I don't blame them for wanting a dog, and I don't blame them for wanting a weapon. His weapon was a, a pretty good-sized mallet, maybe a small sledge. I knew that, so when I told him to get off there, do you think I faced him alone? I'm a big man, but I didn't go alone. No, no, uh-uh, there was another man at the church with me. Two's better than one, the Good Book says, you know? And, uh, so, so i- i- if we open up anything, if it's not supervised, I promise, it's gonna be rough. Some of these people here were given free housing, was given a place, it was faith-based, it was out of Manteca, I helped them even get in there, did some of the, what I could, and yet, a simple rule, they would not abide by, just a simple one. They had other rules, you had to be in a certain time, but if they were out doing something, you know, they, if they were with me, I called, hey, they would bend rules for, you know, the proper reason. After a while, that faith-based thing said, get out. They had no choice. So, if you guys try to help the homeless, I promise, you still gotta be tough-skinned. You gotta have someone that says, get out. You won't abide by rules, 'cause what I doubt, there's a law rebellion against rules. Everyone I named there, you know, I've looked them right in the eye, said, have you applied for a job? Have you tried to help yourself? I said, I can't help you more unless you work, I, I just can't keep forking out. I've helped them fix cars. I spend a lot of money on, on cars, trying to help them, just to keep them going. And so, and I'm not trying to brag on me or my church, that's just little things that church does, that's part of your call. But I promise you, i- if it's not supervised, you'll, you'll see a lot of, of crime in that area.
That's, that's why you have a transitional housing. Did you have a transitional housing?
No, we do not.
Or do you just take them off the street? You have to give them skills, and I'm, I'm preaching to the preacher. You have to give them skills and what's available, and not be punitive if they don't have a job. They will get a job eventually if they're in a housing situation. The, the people you really have to save are the families, those family members that are in a, a car, living out of a car, other, they're, they're not exactly homeless what they are. You treat them first, get them moving, and then you get all those who need to go through the transitional housing, the skills, the treatment, the clarity of vision, and have them move forward. And yes, you have to be thick-skinned. You're not gonna have 100%, but Patterson is having somewhere in the neighborhood of 70%. 70% success rate.
Yeah, so Patterson's Host House project, the delineation there is that it's, that's a male-only facility. And so it's really successful. But again, as you say, it's well-supervised, there are very specific rules in the program that they have, and if you complete it, you will get your own place and probably a job, and you will be back, you know, in the fast lane. But what you said is 100% correct, that their model is very structured. And they are, as the mayor mentioned, they're very interested in opening something similar in Riverbank, whether it be for women or men or some combination.
Okay. Good looking.
God bless you in your effort.
And we'll be calling on you. Any other comments?
So Evan Ash, Riverbank, and I've done a lot of social services, and part of it was working with the homeless in Vista and in the transitional housing. And a big part is the education. They need to learn life skills, I mean budgeting, shopping, communicating. Everything has to be taught because unfortunately, they were never taught that. And if you cannot communicate with a person correctly, you're not going to have a job. If you don't have conflict resolution, a lot of it is, there is not a, they were not taught to push through. There's a lot of mental health services. So if that is something that the city is considering, I mean, it's prong after prong of education, of jobs, of mental health, of drug addiction, of addiction. So a big part that I think we're all missing, that we're not talking about, is the base problem of homelessness. And I would think that we need to have that conversation of what's happening in the society, that there is so much homeless now. And working in the school system, what I saw is a lot of children who are in pain. And these children who are in pain come from families that are fractured. And that poverty mentality, I'm not saying being poor, but the mentality of poverty, of wanting things easy, which is a mentality of poverty, is what's crippling our kids. And it's crippling our teenagers. And it's crippling the young adults and then adults. So I'm a huge advocate for educating the adults. And really, if we're going to be serious about this, about solving this problem, we really need to start attacking as far as the base of the problem in society and the fractured family and wanting things easy, I guess is a way to say it. But, you know, hit me up, I've done transitional housing in Southern California. But the program was done very well, and there was success. And as you were saying, there was, for some, they can just go, you know, from the street to housing, but a lot of them is they need that additional support because they either never got it or never cared to learn it or what have you. So that's all.
There is a program like that.
Yes. What is it?
In Stanislaus. It's the prevention program that has been going on now for 30 months? The prevention program from Stanislaus County?
Yeah, so.
Awareness program?
It's, I mean.
It's concentrating on families, is trying to prevent the homeless before they become homeless. Trying to capture those that are having issues.
From what we're hearing from a lot of providers on this board that the chief and I sit on is pretty similar to what you're saying, which is that you're absolutely right. The life skills component of the homelessness-to-housing equation is the most important one because what they find is that if you move people into shelters and then eventually into housing, even with vouchers, once they have to fly on their own.
Yeah, it's hard.
And they don't have those skills of budgeting and living within your means or getting jobs, they're going to be in trouble, so you're right.
And another thing is educating the public about those programs. I don't know, I mean, I've worked a lot with families, and there's a lot that I don't know, and I try to be in the know, so that's another thing that I think is valuable.
Okay, thank you. Are we done? Can we move on?
If you, we could continue talking for another half hour, or I can go, I'll come back to you if you'd like.
I think that we should make sure that this is on our strategic planning.
Yes.
And I believe that we should be looking for options, each one of us bring them on in, and find out what is doable, see what we can emulate. There's no sense reinventing a wheel that is operating smoothly. I do like the Host House and their program. Again, it's available Thursday at 10:00 or 10:00 AM.
I could also get the county personnel that kind of provides some of those services to all of the cities to come down and maybe chat with council and the community about what they do and how they do it, and just to keep the conversation going. But we'll get on strategic planning, and we'll do some research on what your ideas were.
All right, thank you. Moving on to comments and report, staff reports.
I think we've said enough tonight, so I'll leave it at that.
Council authority member, Councilmember Fossey?
Thank you. I wanted to take an opportunity to thank everyone that came out to the Cheese and Wine Festival. I wanted to thank Sue Fitzpatrick and her group in Parks. They did a great job of keeping everything flowing. Anytime I went to them with a concern, it was fixed right away, never became an issue. I also wanted to thank all the vendors. It was great for me to have the opportunity to talk with them every morning and discuss how things were going, and also to listen to their concerns, but they're also positive comments and ideas for next year. I look forward to talking with Sue and our new person, hopefully, and planning it for next year. It's going to be even better, but it was great this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
Just like to remind everyone that the city will be, the rec department, along with the friends at Jacob Myers Park, will be putting on the Haunted Hay Ride on Friday and Saturday evenings, I believe, this weekend. And it starts around dark, it's a lot of fun, and all the funds go to help make more activities in the park, make it a better place. So come on out if you got the chance.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
The two things I had on my list were already spoken about, so.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
I too want to thank Sue and her staff for their continued support of the city and also our residents with old programs that we've been having for several years, and also with new programs. I like the fact that you're, I'm seeing that the teen center is getting more involved in reaching out to our younger folks and trying to help them with schoolwork and just getting them, helping them to have a place to come to instead of getting in trouble. And then comment about Toys for Tots, not comment, but announcement. We are planning for Toys for Tots with the Marines. Signups will start November 1st through the 30th, and you need to call Casa de Rio. And then we also will have our toy giveaway on December the 15th at Cardosa Middle School from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. And I think there is a dinner planned for Shop With The Cop, right? That is October?
It's the 29th and 6, I believe, at Chief? Texas Roadhouse. I did, in fact.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we mention that.
I'll have to get together with the chief of my tickets. All right. Couple of serious issues happened just recently. One was a bank holdup where the individuals involved discharged a firearm, struck a bicyclist, and I don't know where they are on the lam, but they're, are being pursued. The other was a very serious accident at Patterson and Oakdale. And what we need to do is to deploy traffic cameras that can help in tracking individuals or reconstructing major incidents, and also traffic control and monitoring our traffic patterns. And I believe that we need to move this up for, up on the priority for installation and activation. I would like to see us get an RFP for the, for an integrated system that is scalable and affordable, using the available fundings from Streets and Roads, from Measure L, from our safety and others, so we can have cameras in five basic areas to be initial. That would be cameras at Patterson and Oakdale, Patterson and, I mean, Oakdale and Clarabelle, Claus and Clarabelle, and then Claus and Patterson. Also have a portable camera system that's integrated into our, some of our park areas that are high in special activities. There are several available systems. I've been going to companies, looking at them, saw Panasonic, and I saw Pelco. Pelco is one, used to be one of the better ones, they're still available. I saw Samsung, and all of these systems are very good, some are easily to be installed. And with our charter system, they have fiber optics throughout the city, that we can be integrated quite easily and bring it to any place within the city that we want to have it as available. We won't be actively monitoring it, but only when we need to check. With that being said, we're going to go to public comment, starting with item 8.1, liability claims pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.95. Claimant, Burg Injury Lawyers on behalf of Enrique de Casas. Agency claimed against the City of Riverbank. Item 8.2, Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property 062-031-005 through 007. Agency negotiator, Sean Scully, City Managers. Property negotiators, Ametis Inc. Conference with Labor Negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency representative, Sean Scully, City Manager. Employee organizations, mid-management bargaining unit. At this time, anyone, oh, 54, 84, I'm sorry. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo, a Government Code 54956.92 potential cases. At this time, the public will have time to comment on closed session items as set forth on the agenda. You'll have approximately five minutes to discuss. Is there any public comment? Saying none, we adjourn to closed session. Saying none, we adjourn to closed session.[201.73]
The regular City Council LAO Board meeting for Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018 is now reconvened. Item 9.1, report from closed session of item 8.1, liability claim. We reject by vote of 5-0 the acceptance of a late claim, yeah, for the late claim of the liability. Item 9.2, report from closed session on item 8.2, conference with real property negotiator. Direction has been provided to staff. Report from closed session on item 8.3, conference with labor negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.4, report from closed session, item 8.4, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation to potential cases. Again, direction has been provided to staff. We adjourn this meeting, next meeting is November 11th. That's not right. November, November 13th. November 13th at the City Council. This meeting is adjourned.
Mayor, your invitation to Host House. I'm very interested in going, but they're taking the cast off my watch.